All right, it is six oh four P M on six twelve twenty-three. I'd like to open the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board. Adjustments to the Select Board agenda. Any adjustments?
Well, yeah, one adjustment is that the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission Director is not gonna be.
Okay, so Christian Meyer, who is scheduled to be here at six ten, is not going to attend today. We will try to reschedule that.
And Skip's not coming, right?
Right.
So, Skip isn't coming?
Right.
It's on the email. So will we still have that conversation or will we?
I think we should, I think we should, we should have the conversation, but we should sort of make sure that we have, have more time with Skip to make sure that.
When we get there, we can talk about that.
We get there, yeah, right, so. Okay. Um. We have not approved bills and payroll orders. Uh, we will do that immediately following the meeting and have them to the town office tomorrow. We have approved the minutes from the May twenty-second meeting. Those are signed and approved.
Did you hear anything from Teagan?
Are we also removing? The animal?
No.
Okay.
We'll deal with that when we get there.
Yep.
Sure, any?
Can somebody grab the bids?
Mm-hmm.
I will be back.
Okay, well, we can jump, jump a bit here and um do our road commissioner's report.
Yeah, let's do that.
Are you up for that?
Sure.
And get you out of here? Look at that.
Sure.
We never, we never get you out of here.
I'm never.
You're always like hanging around. All right, let's go, sir.
So, uh, update on road crew applicants. I have one. I have hired him. He has successfully passed a drug test. I'm planning on starting him Thursday, uh, Wednesday.
That's full-time?
Nope, he's, he'll be part-time for now.
Okay.
Yeah. Until, until Greg decides what he's doing.
Okay.
Just a little bit in the go there, but um.
Great.
This guy's willing to do part-time until then.
Excellent.
Yep, yep, um.
I think you could use him up to sixty hour, up to thirty hours. It would still be considered part-time.
Up to thirty, okay.
If you need to.
Okay, yep. Um, sort of the way I've got it set in mind right now is twenty hours, two days a week. Um, but it's nice to have that freedom to be able to.
Yeah.
Right. Great.
And upgrade on the grader. Um, I've got some really good news.
I saw it. It's rolling on the road this morning.
Oh, really?
Ooh, that's kind of shiny.
Yes, yes, very nice.
Doug's here.
Very nice grader. Um, so, right now, we're just demoing it. Um, I have some still sort of in negotiating with them. But I've gotten down ten thousand dollars since the starting, their starting amount. I wanted to run it by you guys before I really pulled the trigger, but I've got a really good feeling about this grader.
So, did you tell these guys that it's like a three-year-old grader? I mean, I know you told me.
Yep, it's a, it's a used grader. It's one that was rented out in, in the company, um, for three years. And after three years, they just sell it.
The hours are still low.
Hours are very low, eighteen hundred. That's very low hours for a grader. Uh, it's in very good shape. There was a couple of things that I really wanted in this grader, which are not available for this particular one. Um, but I, I'm running, that's why I wanted to demo it, so I could actually verify that it's gonna work for us. And after what I see today, I think that it really is gonna work. Because it's a rainy week, I'm not gonna be able to use it as much as I wanted to, but I will get some more use out of it and feel good about that.
How long do we have it for a demo?
We've got it for this week.
This week, oh, okay.
Yep. But we are saving a lot of money, uh, by purchasing a second-hand grader.
Yep.
And the one, the one downfall is that we don't have a warranty.
Right, that was actually my next question.
Sort of a large one, but to buy a warranty, doesn't, they don't even offer it for this particular one because of the age of it, but even to buy one is astronomical. It's a lot.
You think you can get parts and coverage for it without a warranty?
Yes, there, there's a dealer right in East Mall Player, um, that handles that brand.
What's the brand?
Uh, Komatsu.
Okay.
And it's Anderson Equipment is the dealer.
Yeah. They're not known for their great service track record.
Right, but are any of them, I mean, you call John Cat, Caterpillar, call John Deere, they're all very expensive and, and very busy.
And parts don't have to come from China?
Depends.
Japan.
Japan, which is a little better, but no.
But they have, but this Anderson has like other dealerships, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's not just a, it's a, it's a large company. It's a very large company, you know.
We've had some bad experience with Anderson, with some loaders that we're dealing with right now.
Oh, okay.
I just don't have a whole lot of faith, but.
Do you wanna look at it?
If you feel like you can have a good relationship with them, then I'd say go for it.
Well, I mean, there's no guarantee of that with any company.
No, there's not.
I mean, I've had bad experiences with Milton Cat. You know, the next guy will say they've had bad experience with John Deere. You know, there's, there's like three companies that sell graders.
Yeah.
The biggest thing is that this one is available now.
What's the price?
Um, right now, it's set at all-in two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's with the trade, with the implements that I, we need on it, which is the wing.
Wing, yeah.
And they, I got them up to the same amount for our trade, our trade-in value. They came with forty-three, and I said, nope. The other dealer said forty-five, so he came up with that and dropped the asking price from the. So we are.
So the two fifteen is after the?
Fifteen is out of pocket, that's.
Two fifteen is what they pay.
That's the end deal, yep. Yep, our grader goes away and we get this grader, and it's all set up the way we've, we've agreed to. Which we don't get the scarifiers, one thing that I wanted, and I really wanted all-wheel-drive. But Komatsu doesn't make an all-wheel-drive, they just don't, it's not an option. But they've designed it so that it's, doesn't necessarily need it.
No backroading?
Oh, it's got that, yes, it's gonna be, but it's, but it's twice the, twice the weight as our old grader.
Oh, goodness.
It's double the weight, so it's a lot bigger machine, heavier duty, um, gonna do the job.
Sounds good.
So I kinda wanted to give your final lesson before I pull the trigger on it, being that it's a used, that it's not exactly what you approved before. Cause I know you approved a new one.
What was the cost difference between the one you had originally looked at that kinda disappeared on you and this one?
Uh, that one was going to be three eighty-nine.
So it's a big savings.
It's a big savings.
Was that three eighty-nine with the trade-in and everything?
No, that's the final, it was a final cost.
Yeah.
Three eighty-nine, yeah.
I think that's great.
Maybe we can get some ARPA money back.
I was thinking maybe I could. Oh, no.
Well, that's between you and me. But, yeah, I think I just have a good feeling about this grader. I think it's, it's, it's ready to go now, um, and we can get rid of the one that I'm nervous about.
Sounds good. I like it. Um, I'm in favor personally.
So I'll make a motion that we, I will empower our road commissioner to buy it.
Does that get that?
All those in favor? All right.
Okay.
Good against.
We'll make it happen.
Yep. For two fifteen with our trade.
Yep, like I said, I'm still negotiating, but if it does anything, it'll only go down.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Uh, only thing on the agenda for you was vacation coverage.
Uh, yep, so the new guy will be there for two days. Uh, Greg is back. Uh, full head of steam, seems like he's able to get around, he was in the grader today. And we also have Dave Pike doing part-time. So, um, my position will be covered. I told Rob, talked with Robin today, that if something happens, windstorm or something, then she's welcome to call me and I can call them, or like she can call them direct, or, and that goes the same for you guys. Feel free to call my cellphone anytime, and I can make the arrangements to get to my guys or to whatever it's be. I probably can't be there myself, cause I'm gonna be on the other side of the country, but I can arrange for, for things to be taken care of.
Care of. All right.
I do have a list, um, that I'm compiling for the guys to work on while I'm gone. One of those is gonna be putting our sand pile up. Uh, another one is we got to put some gravel on Keene Farm Road. We did a bunch of ditching there, and, uh, the gravel is very depleted, so we're gonna, I'm gonna have him put some gravel on that. As well as today, we put the mower on, because it's time to mow the roadside.
So, you're putting on the loader?
On the loader.
Okay.
That's the only thing that it runs, operates on, yeah. So we'll be starting that, Greg's gonna start that tomorrow. And, you know, along the way, I'll just hand him in. Any questions?
By the way, I wanted to mention both to you and Brandy, when I write these little subtitle things under your report, that just as a reminder, it doesn't mean that's what your report should include, it's just a reminder to, you know.
It's an ongoing issue typically, yeah.
All right.
Have a good vacation.
Okay. I'm glad.
Holy cow.
Did you want me to stay for the bid opening?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
It wouldn't be terrible if you could.
No, I couldn't.
Okay. We should just run straight to that. Going kinda out of work here, but. It's not the worst thing.
Yeah, oh, well.
Good lord.
After.
All right.
We're in order, okay.
So that's Rubles.
So shall we read these out loud? I haven't done this before.
I don't know, to be honest. I think that we should probably read them out loud. Holy lord.
Sound off.
Yeah, I think that one would be. This, I'm just. Not sure yet.
All right.
Yeah.
So they are. So, um, we have two sealed bids for the Valley Lake Road culvert replacement project. The first that we have opened is from Rubles Engineering Services. The proposal can be broken down into two components. Task one would not exceed five thousand dollars according to section three point two of the R F P that we put together. Task three to four, construction services, uh, would not exceed seven thousand dollars. So we're looking at a total value of about twelve thousand dollars based on this bid. Timeline for tasks have been included, they're part of this report. Time for task three to four will be modified depending on bid and the funding. The culvert was funded by a V Trans F Y twenty-five. They expect the work to start in the fall of twenty-four, the fall of twenty-five. We have an insurance certificate that is attached. And we have a plan for effort level based on their professional engineers' activities, their survey crew, and their construction services. Their total comes to eleven thousand, two hundred dollars, which is about the estimate that they generally gave us.
This one is, does seem to be broken down quite the same, but, um, it's from DeWolf Engineering. It includes the existing conditions survey. It includes a wetland delineation. It includes engineering design plans, including legend and notes, existing conditions, site plan and profile, culvert details, structural details, erosion control and sediment control, miscellaneous details, and permitting services. Vermont watershed management, Corps of Engineers, wetland general permit, stream alteration permit. Then they talk about pre-construction and construction services. The whole thing taking, uh, from July to November. Also has an insurance certificate, and the summary of expenses and subcontract fees here is twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. With another twenty-two hundred dollars if a Vermont wetland permit is needed. Is that the way you read that?
It is.
So I guess we should take our, our opportunity to look at these a little closer and have Michael review them also.
I'd like Michael to review them also. I would like Michael to review them as well. Some of these seem kind of excessive.
Yeah, different.
So, just for an example, with DeWolf, our design development on its own, which is most the cost of actually this project, based on their principles, at twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. We have a principal engineer oversight by a senior engineer, a project engineer, a staff engineer, a junior staff engineer, senior technician, and a two-person structural survey crew.
They did come to the site visit, didn't they?
They already came to the site visit. I think that, based on the project that we're proposing, it seems somewhat excessive. But I'd like you to review that. They don't give us much detail about what those different engineering profiles actually were going to do. But I would like your, like your opinion on that.
I can decipher it myself.
I mean, I can, they don't break it down for us, but they do give us, uh, some of the principal engineers that, that are supposed to work hypothetically on the project. We also have five thousand dollars in permitting services. It's not broken out in the, it's like the DeWolf agenda has that broken out. We don't have that broken out in our other.
Not in the, yeah.
So. We already have a wetlands delineation, isn't that true?
Yeah, that's pretty well established.
So we don't need to pay eleven hundred dollars for a new wetlands delineation?
Shouldn't, that should be all, the state should have had all, all that information.
So I think some of this is negotiable, I, I would like to think to a degree. And we're into almost three thousand dollars for a topographical survey, which essentially is readily available.
Two-person structural survey emails?
So, um, I think that we need to get some more clarification about, about this. But it'd be great if you don't mind taking a look.
No, I'll take a look, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, you're more than welcome to call the two bidders too with any questions you have.
I will. Directly, um, we can have.
Did we get two, did we get two copies from Rubles also?
We have three copies from, uh, we, we only have one copy from Rubles. Michael, you can take that one. Thank you very much.
So you, we have three copies of each?
Uh, no.
No.
I don't.
We did, did we just get one copy of Rubles?
Yeah, I can make another copy at the office tomorrow.
Yeah, that wouldn't be so bad, if you don't mind making a couple copies.
Yeah.
That's great.
Do you have the original copy?
Uh, actually, in the, we have a battery. Envelope with the.
Yeah, totally.
We'll get that soon.
Well, I can share Michael's.
Why don't you keep that one?
Once we get together, we can work on it together.
Michael, why don't you keep one, why don't you keep one? We have one copy left over. Maybe we can make some extra copies.
Do we have a potential grant?
Yes, this is all paid for.
It's all paid for.
The grant amount was like forty-five thousand dollars. That's just for the design phase.
Do you want to give this one to me, do you have some more copies?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're all covered.
Hire them both.
Hire them both, yeah.
I don't wanna spend money for no reason.
That's right.
We don't need two, two designs.
And we have a very disparate set of designs that we're looking at right now, so I'd like some more clarification.
Okay.
Part, part of the lower cost for Rubles, um, maybe due to the fact that he did do some work. Um, we, the town hired him to do surveying for the bottom of Valley Lake Road. And he was one of the first people that pointed out the condition of the culvert, so he's pretty familiar with the site already.
So as far as surveying and stuff like that, they probably have all.
Yeah, some work maybe already done for it. Yeah, they've done some of it already. And DeWolf did the other culvert on the other side of Route fourteen.
Of Route fourteen, yeah.
Back in the day.
Oh, really? Oh, the Cabot Road, big culvert?
Irene.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that on a, another agenda.
I think that's what it said on the R F P too. I think on the R F P it mentioned that there would be a decision at the next.
At the next, yeah.
Really?
We have to review it first and then try to prove it.
Okay.
Right. Michael, is there a chance that you can come back for the next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Lovely.
And you'll be gone after this week, right?
Yes.
So if you wanna get together with him.
Yeah, I'm here until Thursday.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the timeline for the, the Rubles one was outside of what we had hoped for, but I think we were all probably kind of anticipating that. Is that gonna be a, something that we need to make a consideration of?
I don't think so.
What was?
So the timeline for the Rubles one was twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and I think this, like the R F Q, we had wanted it sooner, but like, I think we only got.
It's extended to, oh, yeah, to December. And all the pain.
I mean, as they're both aware, we could check with, um, with Nate Seacard of Rubles. The grant deadline for the work to be done is December thirty-first of this year.
Okay.
For the design work.
Design work, just design.
So we don't even have the grant for the actual work yet, right?
No.
No.
So, so there's no timeline on that.
And usually with a project like this, you know, once the design work is done, you're pretty much a shoe-in for, we just have to reapply, but it will be with District Six instead of District Seven. So. But usually, once you get the grant for the design work, it's kind of a given that you would.
That would be nice, yeah.
Put the funding for the.
Otherwise, they're wasting their money. Or running, whatever. Okay.
Yeah, the guy from the state was at the site visit, and he said that he would put in a good word for us, so to speak, for.
And help us, yeah.
The grant, yeah.
Okay. So it looks like we were supposed to be opening these on Monday, May twenty-two. Well, that's only the last meeting. Three weeks late.
Oh, well.
Oh, well.
All right, um, can we move on?
Yeah.
Robin's not here for the town clerk's report. We're gonna have to postpone, uh, the contract with the Washington County Sheriff's Department in our agreement with Central Maine Humane Society, as far as I understand. Unless you know.
You do have the, the copies for signatures that I've given you earlier, if you want to review them and sign.
Okay.
Both of those.
I think we will review these after the meeting and then sign if, if it's, if we agree. We can do that in executive session.
Okay.
Ms. Brandy, can we go ahead with the town treasurer's report, please?
Yep, you have your reports over the last three weeks. Cash receipts, we took in fourteen thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Delinquencies, one thousand, eight hundred, forty-one dollars and eight, and eight cents. Traffic fines of a hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Today, I transferred twenty thousand from the money market over to checking. Payroll was twelve thousand, five hundred, nineteen dollars and ten cents. Accounts payable, twenty-three thousand, eleven dollars and eight cents. So lately, I have been reviewing, um, accounts payable, making sure that we have our twelve payments. accounts payable, making sure that we have our twelve payments in for the fiscal year. Other goodies. Other goodies.
Is there somewhere in here where it says whether we are ahead or behind in general? Like seven or plus, like we did in here?
So we don't put in carryovers. But your last page, which, well, no, not last page, so page eight. We have twenty-two thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents that's left to be spent. Uh, highway, we're at negative five thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. We'll be getting one more installment. You gotta have a bake sale now. We'll still be getting another quarter of Class Two and Three. We will still be getting another quarter of Swenson. But yeah, we, there's a few, and I've been reviewing that. Really going in next year as far as culverts, as far as gravel, and of course with not knowing what the price is gonna be increase, um, but yeah. Those are two key ones that are over budget.
Alright, thanks, Ms. Brandy. Alright, so we finish up the Valley Lake Culvert design. Mr. Larry, you're in the clear if you wanted to be.
Thanks for the good news.
Thank you for all the good news. So the next thing's on the agenda is the status of adoption process for the for for our proposed animal control ordinances and our next steps. Without Skip here, I feel like we should postpone that conversation.
Yeah, there was a, there was discussion at the last meeting about running it all by VLCT, but I'm not sure who, if anyone volunteered to do that.
I did, but I haven't had anything back yet, and so so it's not you. So I'd like to post- postpone that discussion, especially without Skip here and having not heard back from VLCT. We have on the agenda an application for our animal control officer.
No, it was not really an application.
It was a it was a, yeah, it was a volunteered position. Marcel is not here. So we don't really have, I, and as far as I know have they gotten the description of the position?
I talked to him briefly last week in a parking lot, not briefly, it's never briefly. Yeah, but he was still really interested, and I told him about the Big Book of Wolf. I don't know if he has a computer that he can look at that with or, but uh, he was gonna meet up with Kim and talk about the job requirements, and he hadn't done that as of last Friday or Thursday. Kim's kinda hard to get a hold of because he works nights and so.
So it seems like we have to put this on the agenda for our our next meeting. Busy? Is it okay?
Yeah, should we get a hold of him specifically and just tell him that it's gonna be on the agenda in case he doesn't keep up with?
I think that'd be great.
Do you want me to get a hold of him? I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be lovely. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is our local emergency management plan. I'm not sure what the who will work on this is about.
Michael can help us with that, cause Steve send us, uh, Robin sent this around and Michael responded that last time. He and Chance were, uh, yeah, Chance worked this, it doesn't seem very complicated, but we don't have a emergency management director.
We do not.
So I guess we also this uh, um, Keith from Center for Vermont Regional Planning Commission offered to help in any way he can, so maybe when Michael comes back, we can find out how they did this last time with her. What do you know?
Can we use the one from a different town? Can the select board?
Well, it's just a form.
No, 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 since we don't have emergency.
Oh, emergency management director, you mean to hire somebody?
Or even with a stipend, just going outside, like somebody from House or somebody from Hardwick that knows. Otherwise, does it fall on?
Or the fire chief. Yeah, I don't.
Might be worth a conversation with Paul, sure.
You had somebody in mind at one point.
I did, that fell through. Well, they moved on, so it's kinda difficult to have that have that work.
It doesn't look like it's very complicated, and there should be somewhere in the office a copy of the one from the last time, but Robin would have to dig that out.
Let's see if I can reach out to Foster already and get his take on that. Since we don't have chances and opportunity to do that with. Alright, so uh, let's move on from that, and we will go back to it when uh, Michael is is back with us. So we have update under updates and other business. First is the town hall briefing foundation work. I don't know what progress we've made on that, so.
Well, I brought it up last time and for and in Lizzie said she would, could we hold off on that until she got a chance to look at it?
Yeah, so I did go over, I took a pretty brief look, um, and I didn't, so I looked under, I didn't actually crawl under and like do a very thorough examination, and I think I kinda would like to do that at some point when I'm maybe already dirty, um, but I I didn't see any really glaring things that scared me. Though one place where um, there had been a pyramid scene at one point that we talked about in the addition on the back.
It's right, yeah, it's right in the middle.
Somebody has since put some too many blocks and some layers of um PT there, so I mean, I, you know, it's not like a super professional foundation, but it's it seems to be doing what it needs to do for the time being at least.
Except it's not, um, the the building is still not level. Door won't shut, so.
The addition part.
But it's not like falling down or anything, but.
Yeah, um, I should, I should go again and look more closely at it. I was kinda in a rush when I did, but I did note that that had at least been shored up, so it wasn't gonna like, you know, keep the roof obviously needs work, um, and I just, I did have some thoughts, I looked at the estimate that we had gotten it, I don't know when this was from, but it's from some roofer that isn't from around here, there I've, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I think it's based in Central Vermont somewhere.
So the address here is in Rottland, and I thought it was pretty high, so, um, I'm not sure like what the process is for getting estimates from local people, but I think we'd have a way better shot a local contractor, like a couple people.
This is the same co- uh, the company that uh, did the roof here a couple years ago, and it was really hard for the select board at that point to find but yeah, but it's not a complicated project, so.
Yeah, um, I mean, I would think what like their estimate was twelve thousand six hundred and I I would like, you know, I don't wanna put words in other people's mouths, but I would think it would be more like somewhere between six and eight, like a lot less, but again, they'd be coming from Rottland, so that's a lot of travel.
Yeah, that's true.
They probably don't really wanna do it, so they probably throw away number.
So as far as our, um, we have this, what's it called? Process for by which we're supposed to, if anything's gonna be more than eight hundred dollars, it's supposed to, eight thousand dollars, sorry. Those go out to a public bid. But um, otherwise, it's you could look around, you know, do a responsible uh, survey of what what might be available locally. I mean, they should submit a bid.
Yeah, okay. Um, so are we at a point where we're actively looking to have this done?
Well, that's what I was asking the board for at the last meeting. Whether we could make a commitment to go ahead and get it done with the fifteen thousand dollars that we have in the town building fund plus the maybe seven thousand dollars of hopefully less, but. So maybe I should get you a copy of that uh, process. I can't remember the name.
Purchasing policy?
Purchasing policy, thank you.
Yeah, anything under eight thousand dollars, what you're, between a thousand and eight thousand dollars. Um, you don't have to put it out to a public bid, but you do need to shop around.
So I'm curious how this works, um, being new to the board. So I have like friends in the industry, and I'd be happy to like put this out to three of my friends.
Yeah, it's not a conflict unless you make it a conflict. Now, we're a small town, we can't, you know.
Ask people you know who do this work and get a price, they could come and look at it. They could give you a price and um, if it's under eight thousand dollars and then we can entertain it.
So it involves, but not only the roofing itself on the north side, but the soffit work.
Yeah, on the same side of the building? Yeah, I saw that too.
Because the people who did the bat eradication put in some screening or something, some something to keep the bats out, but they said it was really
Um, I don't remember seeing soffit work in the, in this estimate, but so that would probably be a separate, but it doesn't look like it would be a big deal. Um, I am curious too about um, the property line, like as far as setting up staging ladders.
Yeah, there's a, in the deed, there's something about, you know, room to move around to do repairs on the, you know, the property line, that's kind of a issue that's, we don't really have to deal with, it's kinda sketchy, but there is something in the deed that says you can go um, outside that. You know, it would be nice to tell the people who are living there that you're gonna be moving their stuff. But Richard put a scaffolding up there last year and there wasn't any
Yeah, I had wondered that, that was actually, it kinda held me back a little bit from looking more thoroughly, because there was a sign there, and then I went around the back and there was, it was like somebody's, you know, little table. I was feeling like, oh, maybe I shouldn't be here.
I don't think you have to worry about that. The real owner is not around very much, but the tenants kinda take care of the place and you know.
Um, and then, oh, so there was like a little bit more too, so aside from the roof, uh, so I'll crawl under there one day when I'm
And you don't have to crawl, I mean, the the main card is fine, the main card is, seems to be fine.
Where was it that there was um, there was something that I read where there was concern about powder coast beetles in the foundation?
Oh, yeah.
So that would be something to, you know, be good to make sure that it's still good.
I think there were pictures of that in that uh, report that I gave you from Jan Lewandowski.
I think I have that here, actually.
So would we be trying to go at this with two separate?
Like the foundation and the, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, to me, the roof seemed like the most pristine.
We wouldn't expect one contractor to do both.
And then the other thing that I, you know, I didn't think was necessarily like a huge issue yet, but we had talked about the con- the um, the granite steps. Um, and I know we talked about cutting them back versus dragging them away from the building. I think cutting them back is still gonna be a problem, because the problem is like that whole space, the the whole extent of the building behind the steps, even if we cut them down like I can't imagine we could get a saw to go down beyond like six inches, like then you've still got that whole area where rot's gonna happen that you can't access to like put anything over it to protect it.
Well, we were gonna talk to the people who put the steps in and find out how that could happen, because if it won't go down below the yeah, the foundation beams, then it wouldn't be worth doing, but.
Um, okay, so I don't know.
So but but that was in the ARPA plan, but we didn't approve that plan.
Right, so then are we kind of like just tabling that?
Well, you know, if we have one looked over, it's, I think it would be a good thing to look into.
Think that's all for that.
Can we move on to the Mopon drain plant?
That then at least should have been here by now.
Uh, should we table that for now?
Well, if they were gonna come. Yeah, that's why, yeah, I mean
Shocked that all of a sudden
Okay, good.
This is even on the agenda, the select work without any.
That's my point exactly, was that that uh, we got some information from the Regional Planning Commission that this project was being looked into and the identity property owners aren't even notified yet, so now we're starting that. I'm sorry, I didn't call you, I called.
Well, it seems like we're being a little
Oh, good.
So this may be a little bit premature.
Isn't this on, uh, it's a private, it's not town.
That's their position, but that doesn't mean that the town can't have anything to do with it.
We've never been responsible, it's always been on her shoulders to
The dam is, yeah, I mean, she owns the dam.
Okay, so let's start with a person who's here to tell us something about it. What's your name?
Michelle Braun.
And you're with
And we, um, we work on removing barriers from streams, both um, dams and culverts that um, block fish passage and, you know, passage for other aquatic critters. And um, Liz Hunt, who owns the Millipon Dam, contacted us for help with that dam, because it's a significant hazard dam, it's a liability for her, it's an annual expense for her. And she feels that it's impeding her ability to sell her property, so.
Uh, the one point there that makes sense to me is that somebody has determined it's a significant
So the state has a dam safety division that does regular inspections of dams, and that dam safety determined it is a significant hazard.
Listed it that way for many years.
Yeah, which, what that means is if it were to fail, it would cause substantial damage downstream.
So that's a analysis by a state engineer perhaps?
So I went out and visited um, to check it out and um, had Julie Butler from United States Fish and Wildlife with me as well, they're a funder for us. And we took a look at it and it's really complicated. If you've been, you know, if you're familiar with the site at all, there's the pond and then there's the dam. And Liz's well and the house Liz lives in and the house that's been abandoned that used to be over the stream.
The mill house.
And between the two houses is her septic. And then the neighbors, the adjacent property, and maybe this is yours, workshop is up on the on the wall. And then there's a culvert. So that culvert is four feet wide. Right now, the width of that stream is twenty-two feet. And it only goes into that culvert, cause there's a little weir, there's a like a little mini dam right before the culvert with a little small opening. That concentrates the stream so that it goes through.
Twenty feet wide?
The stream.
The stream.
Thankful dimensions on that stream were twenty-two point six.
Stream after it goes over the dam, after it goes over the spillway?
Correct.
It's twenty feet wide?
Twenty-two point six.
So if the dam were to fail, so it's it's four times wider than the culvert. Five times wider than the culvert under normal circumstances, and so if the dam were to fail. I think it's quite possible that it would take out the culvert and the road. And potentially that house that's built up on rock just beyond. I don't know what's going on down there, but it looked a little precarious. So anyway, that all looked really complicated, um, it certainly would also take out Liz's septic. The stream goes under that old house, so it would take out the old house, so if the dam failed, it's a really big mess. But if we take the dam out in a controlled way, you know, if we had. Engineers come and design a dam removal project, um. Some of that might still be unavoidable, like, um, it might be hard to. Work with the septic system in particular and the old house that's goes out over the stream.
The old, you talk about the old house, that's been partially dismantled, right? Not Liz's house, but the other.
It no longer crosses the stream, but it's very much intact.
It's in, the foundation's in the stream.
Yeah.
I thought somebody started to dismantle.
They started to and then they realized they'd have to move their electric line and that stopped the project from being. It was one of those deals they. Wasn't a good idea, but that's what they've done.
So the state has a program right now called the Flood Resilient Communities Fund. Um, and the felt the Flood Resilient Communities Fund, um, is designed to, um. Primarily fund, um, home buyouts, um, like a FEMA buyout, but it's not actually FEMA, it's the state of Vermont. So they have funding for home buyouts and also for dam removal projects, so I'm familiar with the fund because. We might use it for some dam removal projects. And I talked to Stephanie Smith with that Vermont Emergency Management that has the fund. About whether this could be a potential buyout, because if you do that, you achieve many goals. Liz gets out of her property, we get all of those structures out of the flood plain. And then it opens the possibility of looking at taking out the dam. So that's where we are in the conversation, is Liz just talked to Stephanie last week, maybe the week before. And so Liz would very much like to go forward with the buyout.
Yeah, so that could be two different things, buyout and then dam removal?
Right.
Could be two different analysis, maybe?
Yep.
When we looked at the dam, did you look at the pond bottom, the behind the dam, it's pretty solid and it's, um. It's not like there's a, the dam is a wall of water that you could dive off the dam into.
Right, it's got sediment built up behind.
Yeah.
How deep is it?
It's not deep, but I mean, you can walk in a pair of barn boots.
What?
Eight, ten feet farther out in the deepest parts, maybe, but. Uh, when the town put the culvert in, they. Beefed up the dam and diverted the traffic up this and across the dam, that was the detour when they put that culvert in and so.
Which culvert?
One in. So I don't know who would be alive, Ken King might remember the work they did on the dam, but, um, there isn't too many people left.
Grady?
Grady might know that. My impression was that they had definitely beefed it up enough that they could drive cars and trucks over. I don't know who the engineer is that you you're talking with, but I don't know if they have a serious survey. This is this might, this is all I would question and, um. Yeah, I just, you know, the m- the money it would take for what you're proposing, I don't know where that comes from, if it's my taxpayer dollars. I'd probably oppose to it, um. The town, the asset of the Mill Pond is that the fire hydrant is there and that's the water supply. For all the South Woodbury and beyond, I mean, we really don't have that many hydrants.
Yeah, we haven't.
Available in the middle of winter time, especially in that ones. I mean, when it's twenty below, it didn't save Kyle's house down there.
Do you have any idea what, uh, who owns the property under the pond? Because on the tax map, it just shows a circle around the pond and it's not connected to any other property, so somebody's gonna have to.
Question to figure out.
Research that.
I think it's probably public waters of the state of.
I don't think it's big enough for that, but.
I mean, I always assumed it was Grease because he owns the majority of the. Land there, but I, you know, if the stream was put back, would our property lines extend to the stream or, I mean, it wouldn't.
I think the pond would probably stay a pond and I absolutely can't promise that at this point, it would be a matter for the engineering.
Beavers would.
But it's not a beaver pond now, right?
Uh, beavers are there, they are.
Occasionally, uh, augment the manmade danger, you know, they try. Not too often and they're not really all that persistent about it, but.
They've got a nice big pond down below, so.
Right.
That's true. That could be their summer place.
Got a dozen ponds farther up, so it's not, it's not.
All the way down from County Road.
That doesn't stop them from trying.
There's always a new generation.
Ki- I know, uh, Keith Coven from CVR PC talked to a couple of you, I think.
Well, he did some emails, I don't know if we actually talked.
I didn't speak with him, but we did exchange emails. I did send him an email, he, I got that email too, um.
Yeah.
Sent him an email about it.
And he, so. Depending on whether we think. If if it seems like the dam removal might just not be possible because the whole situation is too complicated. Um, then it might just be a straight, um, buyout of the of Liz's property and then. You know, leave the dam as it is, but, um.
Then somebody would have to own the property.
Exactly, and they would own the dam as well, so the, um. Typically, in a in a property buyout like, uh, the, um, municipality. Wants to being the owner of the property, if they are willing to be. And that's, um, a question that that Keith and I both had for you all, is whether you're willing to.
Are you Nikki?
Yeah.
I haven't seen you for a long time.
I know. Nice to see you again.
So where are we at, we're on that subject.
Are you talking about, sorry to interrupt, are you talking about?
She owns, she owns the house on the other side of the road.
The, uh, house with the rich room.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're talking about the, okay, Ben and Libby are on their way, we we all thought it was down at the regular place.
Oh, the townhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just just guessed where it might be and came here.
Sorry.
No idea.
So and it doesn't have to be the town, it could be a different like public benefit entity, so it could be, um. Like a land trust if one were interested or.
Could it be one of the adjoiners if they wanted to take it?
It usually has to be a public benefit.
Right.
Uh, entity, but I don't, I'm not sure.
So, um. Come on in. Is this your stuff? Is that yours?
No, that's fine.
We've already kinda started, cause we were all off schedule, but, um. This is, uh, Michelle Braun from the Friends of the Winuski and she started explaining to us. What somebody has in mind and that there's, uh, money from the state, uh, Flood Resilient. Community Fund that funds both buyouts of homes that are at risk and also dam removal. And so.
So, can we just ask questions?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So, one of the big questions that I have and I'm sure others might also have is. If they get rid of this whole pond, what does that do for? The neighboring properties in terms of like that that beautiful waterfall that we have going down, like is that even gonna be affected? Because I assume the water comes from the mountain, um, and also like just. Yeah, can can somebody talk about that aspect and how it's gonna affect the rest of us if they? If they get rid of this this dam?
So removing the dam doesn't necessarily drain the pond.
Oh, it doesn't.
It depends on, like, if the pond is spring fed, it depends on the flow from above, it depends on the beavers, as someone pointed out. Um, but that would be part of, um, part of the engineering design work ahead of removing the dam. Would be looking at, um, what might happen with the pond after the dam came out.
Cause the reason I put this on the agenda for tonight was just to start the conversation about maybe having a. Community meeting where you could all ask these questions, but it sort of got, uh, ahead.
I don't have tons of answers at this point because the, um, a lot of the answers come with the engineering work that is ways down the road.
But like, how much control do we have over that, cause it's gonna directly affect like mine and Doug's property for sure, like.
Really don't have any control, I mean, it's Liz's desperate to sell her house. And she can't obviously find a buyer, she's had it on the market for a couple of years and, uh. You know, this is her m- move of desperation is try to find somebody, some way to alleviate, you know, her property.
But I don't think you should say we don't have any, any way to, uh, have have input on the process.
Well, no, hopefully we have some input.
I know Liz wants to.
But it's not a, you know, I mean, it's a, it is a private property and the dam's owned by Liz, so, you know, I mean.
Still, there's no survey that shows that.
And and Liz has been paying extra money every year, um, the state charges her to have that dam, I mean. To maintain that dam.
Because of the, because of the liability.
Crazy, but.
Everybody who has a dam has to pay.
Has to pay. Grady and Sheila pay on another dam over, uh, um.
And and what exactly is the liability, what 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 is wrong with the dam, cause it doesn't, there's no head behind it.
It's in poor condition, it.
It's wrecked, but it's no, there's nothing behind it to push it anywhere.
Well, there's the pond and the stream above the pond.
But the pond is.
Is there a stream?
At at any rate, the state dam safety division has classified it as a significant hazard dam, because if it were to fail, it would cause significant. Damage downstream.
What kind of significant damage, cause I'm downstream?
It's the culvert under the road. It goes to your property would fail if that dam washed out is what the.
So it would like flood our property then?
Could flood your property, could flood my property, could wash the road totally out. That would be the kinda thing.
I mean, you don't.
We've had some seriously, we've had some seriously high floods, uh, not that, that culvert's managed to handle it, but. There's a couple of really serious high water incidents in, uh.
Is there a stream feeding, or is that just ground? There's a stream, so it comes down through all the rest of everything.
Yeah.
I mean, there might be springs too.
Yeah.
Not a question, just a statement, yeah, so in the past, um, Liz has asked myself and my daughter who have trapping. Um, licenses to help her, she is out there every day removing sticks to prevent her place from flooding, it's a huge liability.
Actually, she calls me.
Well, now, right, we used to do the trapping, um, but for her, it's it's fearful. And it's a lot of work and being her age, she wants to protect her property and it's a lot to handle when it's just you. So this is something she's done for years, years, making sure that that water doesn't build up to take out her septic or to take out her house, so. For me, I feel like she has the right to be here to defend herself because. The neighbors aren't going out to help her with this.
We didn't even, I didn't even know that she had a problem with it, so like, I mean.
But do you talk with her, do you communicate?
Yeah, I've talked with her, but like the, she doesn't tell me about that, how am I supposed to just telepathically assume that she has a problem?
It may be beautiful, but it's a liability, that's her house that she has to protect and when the water gets up so far, I mean, that's.
So are you on the house on the other side of Foster Hollow, the one that's up above the, the big pond?
Yeah.
Oh, that's you.
Yeah, so they're like the next house up from Doug.
Yeah, we, I don't know, w- we have still never figured out who actually owns the dam, so.
Nikki is right across the road.
Okay.
And we're up the hill on the other side of the dam, our property, we think hits right to the dam.
Your s- your spring is there right on the corner.
Her spring is down.
Corner of the house.
This is, this is the question that I had for whoever owns the spring house.
That's Nikki.
Said, okay, is that actually, is that your actual water source or?
Uh, I think so, I, yeah, I mean, my husband knows all this, but he's not allowed to vote because he's not a US citizen. So, um, even though he pays taxes every year and has had a green card for the past twelve. Um, but, yeah, so so I, as far as the the technical, you know, questions that should seem obvious, I I don't know, but yeah. If he says so, then I believe him.
I rebuilt that spring box with the previous owner at one point and that was our main water supply. That was the whole village's water supply, that one's stream.
Oh, really?
That was a question that we had, is whether that was still active.
And like how, what what would be the impact of of that?
I don't know, it's something that would have to be figured out.
But like, I guess when you say that you're not sure and that it has to be figured out, like, are these? Are these questions gonna be like taken into consideration? That's what I was saying before, like, those of us who are gonna be directly affected somehow, like. You know, whether it's aesthetically or whether it's through something that's, you know, like, you know, the water source, like, how? How mu- how much of a say are we gonna have in this whole thing, because how much will we be affected by? This, you know what I mean, like you gotta have obviously engineers and stuff, but.
Well, so firstly, um, the first question is the the buyout and, you know, Liz would like to go through this buyout process. And it, and would like to, um. Find out whether the town is open to owning the property, that's an important question to get figured out. Part of the buyout process would be deep research and a survey because the parcel, um, there's. The parcel maps show, uh, the dam on your property.
Yeah.
So that has to get sorted out, although dam safety is super clear that it belongs to the Hunt property. I don't know on what basis, but. They're pretty sure about it.
It's a surprise to us.
Did they have to run a survey, there, is there any survey of that property and?
I don't know.
Uh, they had an unofficial one.
A what?
An unofficial survey.
It's unofficial survey.
I know, well, that's they they, they didn't like the where the driveway was.
Mo looked at it and.
They had a surveyer come in, guide Dwight from over in, uh, Marshfield, came and surveyed their property, but, uh.
Who's property, did I already say, came to survey?
Uh, Hunt's property.
Cause Mo had a survey done, I think, what, before we bought our property, which was in twenty twen- uh, twenty, two thousand. Right, two thousand one, and I, Mo had some granite pillars put in, now whether that was an official survey or not, I don't know. But anyway, there's granite pillars there.
But you don't, you don't have the survey or?
I don't have.
I don't have anything from him.
Well, somebody's gonna have to be looking into that.
Yeah, somebody has to figure that out. At any rate, so if the buyout can happen, that can happen all by itself and doesn't affect other people really.
Can I, can you, the buyout, by who?
The town.
By.
The state.
By the state?
Yeah.
By Janet's property.
Part of the state is buying it, would buy it.
The, well, it would be purchased with funds from the Flood Resilient Communities Fund, which is administered by the Vermont Emergency Management Division. Who would end up owning it is a question.
I see.
And it could be the town. It could be the state, maybe the Department of Fish and Wildlife. It could be a land trust.
I see.
A few options.
Has to be a public.
Has to be a public.
I see.
Yeah.
So, but once, but if the town took ownership of it, they'd have to keep it forever? I mean, they couldn't sell it to the joiner?
It would have to be kept as open space in perpetuity.
Yeah, well.
Like a park kind of thing or whatever?
Probably accessible.
So that has to be determined before you can have a transfer, right?
Correct.
Buyer, seller and a buyer and there's not.
The town will have to buy it.
Not one of those agencies that are willing to take title.
Right.
Right.
Right. So that's the first thing. And then that has to happen um, in order to really even get into the possibility of the dam removal. So they would look at, we, Friends of the Winuski would hire engineers to do feasibility study and preliminary design, which would look at some of these, you know, important questions about what would happen with the spring house, what would happen with the culvert.
And what about wildlife? Huge turtle population, huge, there's mergansers, there's all nesting. There's a lot of, so I would think the Friends of the Winuski would be.
Yep, we love those guys.
Yeah, interested in those things and they will not be there.
Yeah, the turtles are fish, you know, I mean, somebody.
Yeah, we would, we would, we would sort our way through this. But the um, the wildlife question, I think is is probably less impactful than unless there, unless there's a rare, threatened or endangered species in there. Um, that's less of a concern because they will go upstream or, you know.
Fly away.
Fly away, yes.
Been doing it for years.
The uh, but the more important question is what are the impacts on infrastructure? So what's the impact on your water source and what's the impact on the culvert? And would the, it's possible that you can't even contemplate removing the dam unless you first deal with the culvert because it's so much undersized. So a lot of questions have to get sorted out. And certainly, certainly we wouldn't take any action that negatively impacted any of those.
Yeah, I guess that's like what I was trying to get at was like, is all this gonna be decided in a vacuum? Because one person has, you know, a situation or is everybody gonna be considered like equally and fairly? You know what I mean? Because it does impact. It's not just like a matter of like, you know.
Well, the the dam at this time is believed to be owned by Liz Hunt and that makes it entirely her decision as to what to do with it.
But you could.
There are definitely design considerations that might complicate that.
But you could do the buyout without her, without a plan for the dam.
Without a plan for the dam, yeah. But then, well, I, I don't know if we could because whoever takes ownership of it would be taking ownership of the dam that they probably don't want either. So, so we probably would need to work on.
Well, it, but it could only be the town or?
We probably need to work on both at the same time.
If the town took over the ownership, then the town would be more um, liable
liable.
to be engaged in the actual planning of how the dam would be removed or what would be. So the town would have a say at then because they're basically the property owners.
Correct.
And is there money, uh, state money then to support, for instance, taking the culvert out and putting a, there is state money for that?
And federal, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's great.
There's, is there not money for repairing the dam?
There is not.
Oh, yeah.
That just doesn't exist.
It does not.
However, private money could repair the dam?
If someone wanted to repair the dam, they could do that, yeah.
Like how much is that?
Well, if you look at, if you look at Curtis Pond over in Callis, they've been fundraising. Their, the cost of the dam repair for Curtis Pond is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's a big pond.
Yeah.
This wouldn't be quite that much, but it would be very, it would still be really quite significant.
In in that ballpark.
You think so?
Tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands.
Nichols Pond, the dam there had to be repaired maybe ten or fifteen years ago and um, it was all pretty much funded with private, private money.
And that was, how much did that come out to?
It was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But that's also a rate of much bigger body of water. I have never looked at a mill pond except for just driving, but it it's way smaller, right?
Yes.
The mill pond's about five acres, but the dam is surprisingly large, yeah.
It's a pretty large dam.
And it's been in poor condition for a long time. There, I looked back through records and the regional planning commission was trying to find funding to repair it in like nineteen eighty-five and didn't manage it at that time.
Ms., please.
Um, I just have a question about the the fire hydrant there. Because I I think, I think it's filled directly from the pond as I remember the tube just runs into the pond. And that's like the major water source for fighting fires in South Woodbury.
Yeah, I'd mention that.
It's a, it's a serious asset for the village and beyond, so it's like a, I mean.
Well, maybe the fire department could buy it. Probably not.
They're busy.
It's a busy place.
They got, they got their own projects.
I think the town would be paying for it, so.
That's right.
That's right. Yeah.
But I think that is a pretty big concern, actually. I mean, and I guess your engineers would look at that too because it's.
Yeah.
I mean, having had a recent fire there and watched them use it in minus eleven degrees in January, it was pretty important.
Well, so neither of these projects is um, particularly fast moving. Um, I'll say, I used to work for the town of Northfield and I managed um, all of the FEMA buyouts after Irene. So they, the buyouts take a couple of years. Uh, we just did a dam removal project, also coincidentally in Northfield on full run. Um, we started that project at the end of two thousand seventeen and the dam came out in twenty twenty, so like two and a half years. So it's not super speedy. Um, so.
It's quite fast, actually.
I I I tend to go fast, but the um, I tend to try to make these things go faster. I'm a little impatient. But the design work is very careful and very um.
Articulous.
Yeah, exactly.
So if the buyout happened and the town agreed to take uh, ownership, would the money still be available for uh, the engineering and whether or not to take out the dam?
Yes.
Is there, I heard your rumor, is there a timeline on this buyout? There's not. Okay, so.
This is the first conversation.
Someone was saying that the money was only gonna be available until December.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Oh, the money has to be committed.
Oh, committed, okay. But everything doesn't happen before then, okay.
So that's pretty fast, though, if the money's committed.
It's sort of marked, right? It's not spent.
Okay, okay. I understand. I did a FEMA project here a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Has, has anyone done an official value of her property besides what she's listed it as?
No, that would have to be done as well.
She's listed it as quite high. Yeah, I don't, I mean, you know, I, it doesn't seem like that would be what you guys would buy her out at, uh, but I don't really know.
Well, normally what you do is look at the tax value. I don't know when y'all last had a reappraisal.
Two thousand seven.
Seven.
Oh, my, okay.
Very long time ago.
So I was gonna say usually add twenty or thirty percent to that, but in this case we might, you know.
It probably need to be an appraisal, though.
Well, so, so you use that um, estimate based on the tax value in order to calculate how much money um, you're gonna need from the Flood Resilient Communities Fund.
Okay.
But, and then once they have said, yes, you can have that funding, the first thing you do is hire a professional appraisal.
I mean, you know, if the price of the property were in reason, there might be people that were willing to join together and own it and have a, some kind of community thing. But, you know, we really just need much better idea of what that would be the bottom line.
Yeah, but there would be a lot of expense to take out that.
It's still, it's probably being too crazy to do just because of the dam.
The demolition expense is is extraordinary.
Really sad.
And that's part of it is taking the buildings out of there, right?
Yeah.
Um, I have a question for the select board. I, I, in the, I heard again, only from talking to neighbors, that there was a request once to have a town beach or to make a town beach, but that select board and maybe Michael can remember was really like, no, 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 we don't want that liability uh, in our town.
No, I think it's just because there never was a location. And that wouldn't be enough. I don't think that would be big enough to have a beach in Doug's backyard.
Usually it's the neighbors.
It used to be.
It used to be a town beach.
Really? So you people did swim there?
Yeah, I've, I've swum there before, not recently.
When we moved here, there was a rope string off a tree and and all the kids who grew up in um, Natalia's generation, they all, that was the big swimming hole.
It was a nice little swimming hole. It's kind of grown.
It's grown in a lot now.
It's tilted in and.
It's deep.
If you don't mind kicking the weeds, it's okay.
It's shallow, yeah. It's shallow or an alleyway.
Why, it's still a good ten feet right by the dam, right when the first.
About twenty feet out, maybe.
Yeah.
I love the idea of town beach. I'm on the planning commission too and it, it has come up a bit, but we haven't, we haven't discussed it really in depth. But it was like one of the points um, from the town plan, one of many, many, many points that was kind of on the table for discussion at some point. Um, but it, I don't know, we haven't really gotten anywhere with it.
Yeah.
But I think it's a great idea. I would love to see that happen somewhere, yeah.
Would you like the town beach?
As long as it's down on Liz's property, I'd be okay. I'll just look over it.
If we're gonna lose the waterfall, I'd take the town beach.
Yeah, that's right. And if I was gonna lose the pond, I'd take the town beach.
I mean, I'm not okay with losing the waterfall. That's a significant part of our property. It feeds our pond.
I mean, it's not just a natural waterfall, it's the outflow of the culvert, really, which.
Oh, on the other side of the road, it's just shooting out of the culvert. It actually like shoots out into the air.
It's.
They would still do that because of the topography.
It will. So you, you, okay, cause that's the thing, I don't know this stuff, so like even if they do whatever they do over across the street, like that's still gonna be active.
Yeah, but there's a whole stream coming down through there. It's still gonna come down through there.
Now we're getting independent.
They're talking about a much larger culvert, which would mean a big, a larger outflow onto your property.
Potentially. The um, al- also on the um, the dam as a waterfall, um, dams were historically built on top of natural bedrock cascades. So a lot of the time when we go to remove the dams, we find there's a natural cascade there. And I have no idea whatsoever if that would be the case in this place, but it's pretty common.
There is ledge on both sides. No, there's ledge on both sides. Well, we put the town map together, the bedrock map. We've mapped along there. There's ledge on both sides. And it's only about a few meters deep.
Likely there would be a natural.
So there's a nat-, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a natural nick point.
Okay.
There's actually already there.
Oh, okay. And that's why you're saying like every, it's, that's not gonna be part of the thing that's gonna disappear. Okay. Yeah, I, I did.
No, I would think that they would want to leave it kind of natural.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not allowed to remove bedrock.
Right.
And you wanna make it really expensive, then we can remove bedrock.
I ask that honestly because, you know, we're trying to work on fish passage and I go out with the fish people and they're like, no, there's all this bedrock here. I'm like, we can do something about that, but no, they don't do it.
For fish, I guess the culvert's probably as big a problem as the dam.
Yes.
So it's, you know, that's a twenty, twenty, thirty foot rise up to the culvert.
And the culvert of Route fourteen is not fish friendly.
It's not fish friendly at all. Actually, it's antithetical to fish.
Salad is a fish, some, something for fish is.
It's, it doesn't, it won't help. Well, it won't help with fish passage and I wouldn't say that it would, but it would help improve the habitat quality.
No, I watched the muskrats and the beaver, everything cross the road right there. A lot of, just a lot of, a lot of traffic come across.
Really?
Yeah, absolutely.
They go up over the road.
They go up over the road, a lot. Some of them go, try to go through the culvert, but not really.
That's a bad idea.
Yes.
There's a really good painted turtle population. I mean, it's pretty impressive, actually.
Yeah.
So in uh, one of the emails I got from Keith, he mentioned, I think the first email, and mentioned Friends of the Winuski and like three or four other who run it, emergency management and and others with, who else was involved? Another agency or two or?
Nobody.
Maybe just dam safety.
Like U S dam safety, US Fish and Wildlife.
US Fish and Wildlife, okay.
I mean, I guess I would like to request that as adjoining neighbors and property owners that we would be informed of how it proceeds. And I'm sure the town will let us know if they get involved
Yeah.
in that way, but um.
This is really just the, just the first foray into this. It's gonna take us a little while.
Kind of a slap in the face for all of us that we found.
We found out through the grapevine.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I, I happened to hear that this was mentioned, but that's the thing, like I, that, I think to Doug's point, like beyond just like hoping that we come across it on hard porch forum, which, you know, I sometimes it ends up in my regular inbox, other times I find it in spam like a week later, like, you know what I mean? It's not a reliable way for.
Well, the plan was to plan tonight, to start talking about um, how to bring everybody who's have the concern in to have some kind of discussion with these various agencies. And I think we still should do that, but at least we know now that there's nothing uh, immediate. I mean, we only got this emails like two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
And you did call Brian and Judy, shouldn't you, didn't you?
Well, I emailed them. I don't know if Brian checked his email anymore, but.
Yeah, so pretty new to everybody.
Okay.
No?
I did tell them today about it. They didn't know anything.
Oh, okay.
This is not.
The only person I had an email for was Michael Sadler. Probably.
That's how we found out.
I couldn't even find a phone number for you guys.
We're only on cell phones.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can live without cellphone access.
People don't know that even if you only have a cellphone, you can still be in the little phone book.
Can you? You can?
Yes, you can.
I didn't know that either.
We'll see. Thank you.
That's the only reason we have a landline. I wanted to get rid of that, but we wanted to be on the phone.
Oh, yeah.
Cell phones will work.
Cool.
Looked a little look in the front of it and see who to call.
Right.
Does it make sense, I'm asking you guys, I guess, um, to take contact information from all the interested parties just to try to like be good about keeping people in the loop?
Sure.
Um, if you guys wanna leave on Thursday, yeah, how about this?
We have plenty of time.
I have some blank paper.
So, uh, can we go over the plan? Just, are we winding down or are we still planning?
I think we're, we're just, we have a lot of, a lot more questions to ask and a lot more. What's your next step, Michelle?
Where are we going from here?
So I need to figure out, I need to find out from you, which is why Keith contacted you, whether the town is willing to own the property um, at the end of the buyout, whether the town is willing to be the, the buyer. So that's step one.
So that's, okay.
If the town is willing to be the buyer, then we'll start, um, we have to make an application to the. If the town is willing to be the buyer, then we'll start, um, we have to make an application to the Flood Resilient Communities Fund and. And that will include estimating the value of the property and the cost of demolition and that kind of thing. Legal fees, hazardous site stuff. So we'll put together that application, submit it to um Emergency Management, and then we'll um. Start taking those steps. If the town does not want to own the property, then I need to keep working on finding someone who does want to own the property. Whether that's Vermont Fish and Wildlife or a land trust. Land trust seems a little unlikely just because it's a very small parcel and it shares a driveway and so.
We have a, we have a local land trust, a Northern Rivers Land Trust.
Oh, you do?
I happen to be on the board, but we don't do any, we don't do any ownership. All we do is conservation easements.
Easements.
Okay.
We could form a nonprofit organization.
I'll, I'll ask, um, I'll ask Stephanie about the ownership. Possibilities. I'm pretty sure it can't um be a part of it. Like a nonprofit. It needs to be.
Immunity.
It's a municipality, some kind, some kind of.
I believe so, miss.
So that's one thing we should keep talking about and getting, we probably should check with our insurance provider to see how they feel about. Liability and.
Cause that's gonna be a huge one.
It's gonna be a big one.
Huge.
I would imagine that townspeople would have to vote on it.
We would have to bring it to town meeting.
No, well.
We would.
We would have to.
We would have to.
If they involve money, you mean, or just involve?
Liability.
The ownership?
Just taking something off the tax rules and putting it into the town's hands is, that's all.
That, that's, that would have, that, that would have, that would have to go to town meeting. Would have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I know there's a hot contingent in town that. Probably scream about that for sure.
Well, it needs to, it would have to come up no matter what.
When you say town meeting, do you mean one of these or do you mean the march thing?
Town meeting, town, the march thing.
Cause well, the reason I ask is cause like I, I usually have to work that day, which is why I've been to like one or two in the.
We're trying really hard to move it.
Oh, yeah.
So we're gonna do it, so we're gonna be doing it on the weekends.
That would be really helpful for those of us that don't work for the state or a school.
That's why we did that.
They're trying to make sure that we have higher attendance.
Well, that did pass at town meeting.
It did pass at town meeting. We haven't implemented it yet.
So there's no more Tuesday town meetings. Saturday, it's gonna be Saturday.
Michelle, can I ask a question just to clarify? So if the town did take ownership of that property, would the actual cost of purchasing it be paid for by that grant that you were talking about? So the town wouldn't have to come up with that money? Okay. And the money to, if the dam were taken down, the money to do that, would that also be paid for by the grant?
Yeah.
So the town would really not pay anything, but then they would just take ownership?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, assume.
Yes.
We assume the, yeah, the expense of, of upkeep.
Yeah.
But we haven't, oh, is it true that the upkeep's like two hundred and fifty bucks a year?
No, that's just a little fee that, a little fee that every.
The state charges to keep.
Every dam owner has to pay to the state for inspection, inspection fee.
Oh, so that's different.
Yeah.
It's like three twenty-five, three fifty, I think.
Yeah, that's different depending on the size of the dam.
The size of the dam and the integrity of the structure.
And there is a possibility, and the engineers will be able to tell us, is if the dam was removed, that there could still be a pond there. Especially if there's ledge involved.
Right. It just might be smaller.
Might be smaller or might, might be the same.
Or the beaver might make it bigger.
And that's a different thing.
I have a follow up question, I guess, too. Um, is there a way to have that feasibility study done without taking ownership to help make that decision?
Well, yes, in theory, um, we could do the feasibility study first. The, the dam removal feasibility study. The only hitch is that we would have to decide that we were going to do the buyout. In order to have the funds to do the feasibility study.
Gotcha.
So it wouldn't be.
And we've got a little chicken and egg thing going on there.
Okay.
We might be able to work that out. I'll, I can um. Yeah, meet with Stephanie at the EM and. See about some of those details.
In such a study, like, there's no way to include looking into the possibility of, um, shorting off the existing dam or rebuilding or anything like that? Would they look into that at all?
There's just no funding whatsoever to do that, so.
Okay.
It's removal or status quo.
But it sounds more like your question is, would they at least, even though they wouldn't have it or anything, would the engineers can give you any information on that?
They would, okay.
Cause it would be an expense now. It would be an expense.
Yes, I can see that, yeah.
No one wants to keep old dams.
That's kind of the bottom line.
Well, I mean, a lot of people who have private ponds want to keep their dams.
That's totally different.
Why?
And this private owner does not want to.
Does not want to keep there.
She doesn't care.
She does care. Don't say that.
She wants out. She wants to leave.
She wants to sell her pro- she wants to get out of the problem.
Yeah.
That's the whole issue is we all consider ourselves owners of the pond, you know, whether it's not the dam itself, but we're, the pond is part of our properties. So, you know, it is a.
And part of our lives.
It's a consideration for all of us.
And your property values.
Well, I mean, obviously, if the pond is gone, then that's gonna change our values and. Is that compensatable or not? That would be something we would have to consider and think about lawsuits or whatever, you know, I mean, you guys got deep pockets or not, I don't know.
We have no pockets.
I mean, where are you based out of? Friends of the Winuski, where is that organization from?
Mobiliar. But it's not considered on your tax bill saying you got waterfront edge. So you're not getting taxed on this. She is. Liz is getting taxed on this.
Sure relying rate.
And Brian.
The view doesn't, doesn't affect you as far as expense.
No, Doug is taxed on. He has waterfront.
Of the pond?
Yeah. He does. And we might, we don't know.
I got a dock that I just built last summer to get ready to install on the pond. I've had a dock there for twenty-five years and it's been gone for five years because of.
It would be interesting to know what Grady and Sheila think of all this.
I would imagine they're quite. Happy with the pond in their backyard, cause they've had it there for their whole life.
I mean, their cows use the drink out of it.
Yeah.
That's the fire that surrounds most of them.
That's great.
I know that Liz has talked with them about whether they wanted to fix the dam, and they said, no. It's a huge, if it, if it said if it, if it goes, it goes.
It'd be an extraordinary cost, extraordinary cost.
Yeah, I love that one. You mentioned that already, your spring. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of contingent things that are there.
Yeah, Liz, Liz was thinking too that there are springs into the pond. Do you think?
There probably are, yeah.
Yeah, there must be some, but.
Points in it when you're swimming.
Yeah, there are two seep springs that have been mapped, that are within that pond system that are mapped, yeah.
So, like, I said, I don't really know how all this whole thing works. With our spring and whatever they decide, but like, let's just say worst case scenario, like, you know, they do whatever they do and. Our spring, that little gray box is affected, like, are we then gonna have to figure out like a new way to get our water or what? Like, how does that whole thing work?
That would have to get figured out in the engineering.
Well, okay, it's fine to say that now, but like, what does that mean for us or the people who end up owning that house? Like, you know what I mean? That's why I'm so fired up about this. It's because like. Like, and, and it would be great if I'm just like, you know, the person who just doesn't get it. Like, then, then you could just explain it to me and, and I'll be fine, but like, just saying, I don't know. It, it doesn't make me feel any better.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna wreck your water.
Okay, alright.
Without your permission.
Which you'll have a lot of, okay, alright.
The spring should still exist regardless of whether there's a pond there or.
It, it actually, it goes, it goes the other way. Those, those.
What do you mean?
When you, when you, when you deal with um seep springs. If they're coming from up gradient.
Okay, alright.
So the pond doesn't actually feed into that system at all.
God, okay, alright.
It's a draw on the spring.
Okay.
So that, it's the opposite.
That, like I said, I'm glad.
The pressure gradient is coming from higher up in the system.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
That wouldn't have that, that.
And if the pond did run into your spring, it probably wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be water you wanna drink.
Oh, okay, great. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, well, it, so that, that part wouldn't.
Okay.
And if somehow, when they were doing the design, they were like, there's no way we can remove this dam without destroying Nikki's water. Then we can remove it.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
We'd have to think of some other selection.
Alright.
Your water or the dam.
Okay, perfect. That, like I said, I am like. I didn't even take the one-on-one class on any of this, so, yeah.
Most people did not, no.
Okay.
Okay, so you said that the town, uh, first step will be. To figure out who would own the property and whether or not the state has enough money to pay her what she wants, and then there'll be an appraisal and a survey. And figure out who owns what, and so how, how is that, is that proceeding? Step by step or?
Step by step. We haven't, we're on step one, which is asking you whether you want to own it.
Oh.
Right.
Oh.
We have to make that decision.
We don't have to answer that now, do we?
No.
We should probably have all your neighbors come and convince that it's gonna be kind of up to you guys.
Could have a hearing.
To convince this board.
We'd have to have a hearing.
We should do that.
Yeah, have a hearing.
We'd have to have a hearing.
We should have a hearing and, like I said, I think if you actually wanted, went ahead with this, you'd probably have to present it to the town. At the town meeting day, so that's.
Well, we can do it as a special hearing.
We could just do a forum first and.
And have a basic forum before that.
Yeah, the town might agree to it, maybe, but it might not either.
We'll guarantee on that.
Is that what you guys all want to see happen, or are you just kind of here for, just to, to hear the conversation?
I have no idea, really. I just wanted to find out, get like my feet on the ground with the project.
Yeah.
To know what's going on, so it's very helpful. I really appreciate it. Thank you for bringing it on the agenda. It's really helpful. And thank you for coming and explaining what's going on, because we really didn't know.
Will you be the point person for all this?
I only heard from Liz that she saw it on Front Porch Forum yesterday, so I'm here kind of by coincidence.
Yeah, alright, yeah, we would have invited you if this was more than just a planning.
Initial conversation.
Initial conversation.
So you'll be the point person for?
I think the time thing is really important to people.
The what?
The time, like, not, not finding out the day before, like, let's say to you. If you start doing that here, I don't think it'll go well. I mean, I really feel like that's, that's what people.
Do people need time to consider?
They need time to, I mean, this is really, it's part of the landscape. It's really part of our town, so. And.
They got a street named after it.
Yeah. You can compensate for somebody's wealth, but you can't compensate for. You know.
The whole.
What we have, the ambiance, the whole thing. And that's, maybe that's just the way it is, but that seems sad to me. And all that habitat.
Okay, so Michelle.
Yes.
Your uh email?
Uh, it's Michelle with one L at winuskiriver.org. Where you can find on the internet.
Okay.
Any other question?
So do you think we should, you guys think we should open this up for more conversation sooner rather than later, like?
Well, I don't, I don't.
You don't?
I think it, it's probably better to get more information. And then present that this is where we are and, you know, where, where those, I don't know where those points are gonna be, but that seems to me, which, having another conversation like this, I'm not sure is.
Oh, with more people. I mean, it'll start, have to start all over with the, with more people who might be interested, you know, Grady and Sheila.
I think we have all the information that we. Need um to consider the buyout. I mean, the other information, it sounds like with the study, feasibility study, et cetera. That won't happen until we make a decision on the buyout. It seems like we have all the information. That we need to present to other people in town about whether the town. Will become the public entity that would, you know.
The, I, I do have a question about the buyout too. Um, so I know you mentioned it being a huge liability, which I totally get.
It's gonna be two minutes.
But if part of the deal was that the dam was getting removed, then, you know, as, as a part of the whole process, would, then we wouldn't have the liability, right? Because the dam wouldn't be there.
Yeah, it was, I think it would be good to bring VLCT into a conversation and find out what, what they, what the liability would be for the town. I mean, that's obvious that we need to.
Even, even without, even without the dam structure, even if that was to be removed, there would be a significant liability.
Okay.
To the town. It's public space. Public space is a wetland.
And especially if it did maintain some water, because then.
And it will, even without the dam structure there, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be a fen. It's a natural fen. It was dammed because it was a fen, so.
I mean, the chance of somebody drowning, and then somebody's gonna get sued.
Well, I don't think the town would own the milk pond unless.
Not, I don't know. I don't know.
We don't know what the, we don't know what the distribution of, of that would be, so.
Question answered.
These are really important things that we have to address.
Another survey, yeah.
I don't think Liz is considered the owner of the milk pond.
No, just her little property.
Just the, just the corner.
And that's what the town would acquire.
Right.
So.
And to your question about what steps Dexter, in terms of letting people know, in the minutes, it'll, how much of this will be reflected in the minutes? Not the discussion per se, but the.
HCTV has it all.
But the information, you know.
The minute taker didn't show up tonight, so.
Oh, okay. Like, she will watch the video and, and do minutes.
Yeah, do some minutes.
Pass it on to Diana, which Diana will review and get, print, minutes will be printed. Yeah, I'm just thinking that if maybe. They'll be public. Yeah, if they're made public, but even, it could be even a little bit more proactive to the landowners or something to, or maybe just even if it got sent to us and we could pass it to people to make sure they read it. So yeah, we can, or. That might be helpful. Multiple copies at that town office. Yeah, that would be helpful, I think.
But that wouldn't happen until the, the next meeting, which is when we will.
Approve them.
Approve the minutes from this meeting.
So it's a monthly.
But anybody can watch the discussion on hctv.us? If you don't, if you have cable. If you don't have cable, you can look at it on your computer, hctv.us.
Well, that's good, I mean.
No, I mean, if you have cable, it's like channel ten eighty-one or something like that.
Ten something.
I don't have cable.
But we could, we could even pass that information to the neighbors so that they can watch it and see the discussion no more. I just think it's good because I've talked to a couple of different neighbors and had kind of different stories, and so it'd be nice to. Have everybody have the same story. You know, so we all are on the same page. So appreciate that.
Thank you for explaining the thing.
Waterworks.
Yeah, I'm sorry I had to start out this way. There really wasn't the, the plan at all. I was just thinking, we just learned about this and it was time to develop a plan to involve everybody else, but now we're here, so.
The phrase "milk pond" really gets people's attention.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, well, it's, it definitely is a historical landmark.
We'll have an organization called Friends of the Milk Pond.
Although, if you don't live in South Woodbury, you probably don't know that much about it.
If you don't go out Doug's driveway and start looking for it. Yeah. It is a little setback.
Alright, um. Without other comments, I think we should move along on our agenda.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna go. Thank you for.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, so on the agenda is the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department Plan for their settling pond, on town owned lots and the fire response.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you a little bit on that, but it's, um, I contacted Stephanie Smith again, this woman who was just talking about, yeah. Asking whether the, um, putting that little settling pond on our town property would be averse to the conditions that we have on the deed for FEMA, from FEMA. And she said, apologies, she said FEMA would take issue with that if it was on a buyout property. So I, we talked briefly, I didn't really talk to her yet, but I do think we could possibly tie this in with the property line issue, um, that we have there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And possibly, I just made this, possibly, um, this is the, let's see. This is the, uh, here's the power pole, I think. Here's where the fire department surveyor put a property line. He measured, he put it way up here. In the eighteen fifty-seven deed, it says that that corner of the property is six feet from the bridge. So, you know, who knows where the bridge was or where the stream was? I mean, the stream wasn't even built up with granite blocks like it is now because the cow, one of the things in the deed was that the cows could still drink from the stream. So our, our surveyor put the, took a midpoint there. But their surveyor, Richard Bell, decided way over here next to the stream, so.
What's the scale of this?
Oh, God, I don't know.
So it's pretty crappy that.
Well, I don't have the whole thing. I mean, I have just the part that, that.
Without a scale, it's impossible to make any judgment on.
Yeah, well, anyways, the, the idea was if we could use this as an, as a way to straighten out, because the way they have it, we wouldn't have any access to this part of our property, the property on the stream.
It's not that we don't have access to it. Does it become inaccessible?
Well, if they wanted to put up a fence, they could. I don't expect they would, and they said they wouldn't. But that's the point is that, uh.
That we're, wouldn't refer to the worst possible expectation.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we're, I was gonna sort of let it go cause Paul said there's no way they're gonna cut that off. But this, if we could do this, clear up the property line issue and give them their little place for a pond over here, that might be a, a good solution. Paul's, Paul's response to that was he didn't wanna spend any more money, but.
Isn't it that if the fire department goes belly up, it reverts to the town's property anyway?
Oh, yeah. Well.
That's what they have in their bylaws, but I don't know if the town was agreed to that. That's in the fire department.
That's in the fire department bylaws.
Isn't that in the NOU?
I don't think it's in the NOU. They have what they call their bylaws and there is a clause in there that if the fire department goes belly up, that all of their assets revert to the town, just the buildings anyway.
Right.
So anyways, I just wanted to mention that as a possibility if the town wanted to. I, I haven't told FEMA that there is that issue, that that property line is still.
In flux.
Yeah, I didn't really think they would care and if they did care, I didn't wanna, you know, our surveyor.
I'd like to know exactly what the distance is between that disparate property.
Okay, no.
So, or maybe I can come up with the actual map.
By having a sediment, by having that water storage, is that gonna affect the state for replacing that culvert that goes under the wa, under the road?
Under what?
It really needs to be replaced since it's falling in? By having a water retention on that property?
Oh, it would be way back. I don't really think.
But it's still, if, if up above beaver dams.
It was just a little like sticky.
It's similar to that, the little retention pond, uh, that's in the park on the other side of the stream. With the stove, that kind of, it would be something similar to that.
It's really small, yeah.
Which is, we've been waiting for a long time to have that culvert replaced and.
The box culvert? Yeah, I don't know if that's even on their radar anymore.
Well, it used to be when we were part of District Seven, it was on their radar. I have no idea. Still is, okay.
I can follow through with it more. I'm sorry I haven't, haven't given.
So anyways, that was just why I put it on there.
Notice the blocks that caved in on.
Both sides.
Yeah, that's not the culvert though. That's, that's the.
But still, a new construction of a culvert would take care of that.
You think? We could hope so. You would hope so.
And actually, District Seven did say they would fix that. And then District Six is aware that they could fix it, that they had been promised to be fixed, but no one's fixed it yet.
It's not high their priority.
No, it isn't.
Okay, is there anything that we skipped over here?
There was something about the local emergency plan. That's one reason I'm hanging out here.
Right, thank you. Waiting for you to come back, no. So, um.
So I can give you a history of that and I have the two thousand twenty-one, uh, copy.
Oh, I wondered about that.
I could send that to you as an email, um, so.
Do you have a copy of that?
Um, I have a paper copy here.
No, I mean, I was asking you, you guys get, did you get to print that out?
Yeah, you should, somewhere Chris may have that in his.
I think I have that.
In email files or town files. So, um, what's really needed, um, we don't have an emergency management director, but the number of last few years, um, Chance Payette as our emergency management director and also a member of the fire department and myself as a select board member have done this for, um, and we really, there hasn't been much to do on it new. It lists who, different principal people involved, um, and those names change, um, and some of them do need to be updated. And then it has, there's a listing of equipment. It's mostly fire department equipment, um, and like the school is our emergency shelter, so it has the, you know, the listing of the principal, and Larry's name is on there as the main, former maintenance person in twenty twenty-one. So, um, it wouldn't take much to do this, but if, um, to redo it, um, we would just have to come up with some new names. Um, obviously I'm not a select board member anymore and Chance is not the emergency management director. As far as I know, we don't have, have one at the moment.
It falls to the chair of the select board.
Yeah, and Paul, yeah, um, I think that's why I was a part of it, cause I was the chair. Paul Saruti is listed. He's the fire chief and, and, uh, and you know, the, it's basically our fire department is our emergency management team.
Agency.
Pretty much, um, so, um.
Michael, if you would send that to me, I'll, I'll, I appreciate that.
Okay. And you know, it would be, I, I would love to see somebody from the fire department become the emergency management director. It just makes the most sense cause they, they have the training. And when we do have an emergency in town, they, they're the ones to take care of it. So, yeah, so I'll send this, a copy of, this is the twenty twenty-one.
It's the one that I have, but I would mind a digital copy.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's probably buried somewhere. I'm sure it's coming in. So I would appreciate a fresh digital copy that I can look up.
Thank you, Michael.
So, you know, Paul Saruti might be willing to be the other.
I'll talk to Paul. There are a couple of, I can ask. Thank you.
Here is that list of names. Okay.
See you later.
Thank you very much, Michael.
In terms of other agenda items, I do not have any others that we need to return to.
Michael, would you set that door, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
There's still mosquitoes.
Yeah, you don't.
Hate mosquitoes. I would like to make a motion that we move into an executive session.
A second, though?
About a couple of things.
What was up here? Bye.